All listening to order, the Thompson Select Board, it's June 5th, two thousand twenty-five, and we're in the Donald A. Russell Meeting Room. Please rise to the Constitution Regent.
Congratulations to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic, which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eddie, you call the roll, please.
I will. Roland Tufts.
Here.
Marie Brilliant.
Here.
Anne Callahan.
Present.
Ryan Holmes.
Here.
And Matt Nixon, I understand, has been at Skews.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Town Manager is aboard.
Good evening. On June sixteenth, the state of Maine will hold a public hearing regarding eligibility for an agency store liquor license considering the following stores: Market Basket, Rusty's Market and Grill, Noria, two eleven Lewiston Road, and Main Smoke Shop, number one thirteen. If people wish to participate in the public hearing, they can do so in person or online. There is a public notice section on our website on the bottom of the front page on the right. If you go to that, you can have details of either where to go for the hearing report, how to participate online. Thank you to the Thompson Garden Club, who did a beautiful job as usual with the gardens here at Town Hall and had them looking great for the Memorial Day ceremonies. Town Hall will be closed on June nineteenth or Juneteenth, however, there still will be a select board meeting that evening. And finally, I'd like to welcome our Bowden interns who have begun their summer work. Amaya Nicholas and Miles Palmer are working with town administration, and Iris Reyes is interning with the planning department. And then invite Amaya and Miles to come up and say a few words about themselves.
Hi.
Let's have that.
I gather.
Yeah.
Hi. Ery.
Yeah.
I'm Miles. I'm from San Francisco originally, and I go to Bowden and that's part of that, and I major in government and chemistry, chemistry, like the environmental track. Um, yeah, my, uh, my dad's side was from Maine. My dad grew up in Brunswick, New York. So I'm not here.
Welcome.
Write that down. Hi, I'm Amaya. I am a rising junior at Bowden. I'm actually from Denver, Colorado. I study government and philosophy. Um, yeah, I've never been to Maine before, but I love it so far, so.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it for my report.
Great, thanks. Uh, board and committee reports, I don't believe we have any tonight. Other comment? Anything? No public comment. All right. Any correspondence this week? No? Okay. All right, just since the agenda, we're just, go ahead.
We have one. Uh, we're gonna move forward, uh, if you approve, uh, twenty-five forty-eight for the county tax into two installments if we can move that up. So, um, that this is a three day long.
Any objections to that?
Let me make a motion out of the middle.
Second.
All favor? Okay, thank you. All right, consent calendar. Approval of the minutes of the regular select board meeting held May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Salute.
Second.
Second with all in favor? Thank you. Uh, on to unfinished business. A public here, we have none. Um, under unfinished business, twenty-five dash twenty-eight, consideration and any appropriate action on a request or it's for a TIF four four-four, Union Park Drive.
I, I do the, the, this, this.
Ironically, I told.
Uh, Mr. Holman.
Okay. Thank you very much for having me back. Um, we probably, we'd rather know I didn't bring another PowerPoint presentation and think we've had, we've had a good familiarity with the project. Uh, really appreciated, you know, your feedback. Um, and I think we sort of left off the last time, uh, with the select board
We've.
Uh, providing feedback to us that we needed to go and evaluate, um, you know, see if that was gonna work, basically whereby um, it sounded like select when Nixon was looking for, instead of doing an average of fifty percent, uh, TIF that starts at seventy-five percent goes to fifty percent and then twenty-five, um, the preference was for a straight line, even if that resulted in a higher, in sort of average rate. Um, and so an almost identical, you know, rate or value of a TIF would be at sixty percent for the whole thirty years. Um, so if that is the preference of the board versus averaging fifty, but having different levels during the average time. Um, we're, we're very open to that and we'd like to work with you and see this project happen.
I have a question for Town Manager. Um, could you review that? The map on that, just to see how it works.
Um, this is the first I've heard of the percentage, but I think the other, the other issue probably you want to consider is not just the sixty forty, but, um, what would be the affordability for the units? How many units? What percentage of AMI?
Right, and, uh, so where, where we left, you know, in our last discussion, um, is, you know, that level of TIF, um, you know, the, the sort of most we can offer basically is, um, thirty-three percent, which is a little over sixty units. Um, at a hundred and twenty percent AMI, which is the workforce housing, the sort of maximum threshold for the state of Maine. Um, and then ten of the units at eighty percent AMI, um, which is about half give or take of market rate for markets.
And then you know it's twenty for ten, for eight.
Yeah, yeah, we, we'd like to do twenty, but each one of those, you know, when you look at what it does to the appraisal, each one of those units reduces appraisal by about a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, um, you know, at the current rate, so there, or that actually removes over twenty percent of the value of the TIF.
So the one ABA MI, what would be our direct speed on that one?
Uh, sorry, that, you mean the one twenty AMI?
The one twenty, yes, I'm sorry.
Um, it, it would depend on the, the unit size, you know.
The one bedroom versus two bedrooms?
Right, exactly. I think, like, you know, s- studios and one bedrooms would, would be, you know, from the mid-teens to the, you know, two thousand kind of range. Um, you know, give or take, so that, that would be the, the rest. I can pull those up in more detail, you know, folks want. Uh, we presented those, like, last time in the presentation.
For.
For, maybe not presented, I know we talked about them. In that gig, I'm happy to bring that out again if you might. Yeah, but the, the thing I would point out, I guess, is at eighty percent AMI, the same units would be about seven to eight hundred dollars a month cheaper. So a unit that would normally be, you know, eighteen hundred or fifteen hundred, instead the eighteen would be about eleven hundred a month.
That's only ten units?
Yes.
Out of a hundred and eighty-two?
Hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty.
Yeah, the other fifty units would be at a hundred and twenty percent AMI as a cap.
Oh, so the sixty units are including the ten units?
Yes. Right.
There are other questions. Do you recommend on this?
Um, I think this is a nice project, and this isn't all comment against the project. But my recommendation is just for the, that amount of tax support. Um, and thinking of other people similarly situated.
Hmm.
I don't, I wouldn't recommend it. I don't think it's enough to give up sixty percent of our tax revenue.
Is, is it sixty percent or fifty percent of our tax revenue now?
I think proposing now sixty percent for you for the full period, right? And then forty percent for the town.
Right. Yep, um, i- if, if the town wanted to do a lower rate, like fifty percent, um, we could do that. We just couldn't do the ten units of the lower eighty percent AMI. We will stick to the main housing formula, basically, for the one twenty. Thirty-three percent of units.
We've got, um, a heck of a tax project that's two or three bedroom units, that's fifty percent, so we're giving up fifty percent of the tax revenue, uh, for those units. And the town share, we're likely to be able to use all of it on school expenses, because if you've got two or three bedrooms, you've probably got kids in them. Um, many of these units are gonna be studios and one bedrooms, correct?
Uh, it, it'll be about half two bedroom apartments, some more if you want to.
Including the affordable housing ones?
Yeah, there'll be a mix.
We, we need to have, um, enough kids in there to use up our share of the taxes to maximize our benefit from the TIF. Because there's limited things that we can use our funds for, but one of them is to be able to use them for school expenses. So, but we have to have the kids going to the school. If it turns out this was, um, single couples, you know, without kids living in there, we'd have trouble actually spending our share of the TIF stuff on town expenses, which means we wouldn't really get the benefit of, you know, we, we wouldn't get the benefit of our share of the TIF money. And we probably, right now, we only shelter, um, about fifty percent of the money we could on our TIFs, because we don't have enough legitimate expenses we can spend things on. Uh, so.
So how many kids would, there need to be?
To use up forty percent of, you're estimating what, about five hundred thousand dollars a year in taxes?
Yeah, I, I know there's a formula that's used to calculate how many kids would be in this project. I'm not sure if Jim, you know what that formula is, but, um, I don't know. Sorry. Yeah, I, I would think it would be quite a lot in that calculation that would go towards the school.
We, we probably need, if, if it's about twenty thousand a year to educate a child, we'd probably need to have at least ten kids in there to be able to use all of our share of our revenue from a TIF.
Uh, yeah, and in, in a hundred and eighty units, which might be two hundred and fifty-ish or three hundred people, I'd be shocked if there weren't ten kids in the school. I mean, I would think ten is a low amount for that much house.
Do you have ten kids in the Sandpiper?
No, we have three right now. Uh, but again, you extrapolate that out to nine, I mean, you're very close to the ratio that we'd be at. And the Sandpiper units are smaller than these units. I mean, we truly did as small as we could get, you know, again, because costs are so high right now. So that's been, you know, part of why I think it's appealed to people downsizing and that sort of thing. So. So just to clarify the, so Jim Demesys was, he came here for the record, um, just want to make sure, Dave, that we're making that clear. It's, if you did the same ratio as Sandpiper, it would be nine kids, that's i- if it was the same building, right? Um, it, it, but again, that changes every month as new families come in and out. Um, so I think here you'd be very, you know, at a minimum, that ten, but with bigger units, I would expect more children to be here. Um, I think families often come to these school districts because they're so good. Um, but I don't think it's very likely that none would lack the ability to use those funds.
And, and if that became the only issue, I'm just saying, Mark, if that's the only issue, and that's like, so pending that number, we can get you the industry standard numbers based on main development about what that would be and how many kids it would generate. However, I just want to make sure that, like, that's valuable to you or in terms of the decision-making and in terms of, like, because we don't want to delay it, but if that was the only issue, we could easily get that number.
And ultimately, it's not my decision.
No, no, I was just making, I was just making it clear for the record, yeah, for the, everybody.
Yeah, I, for one, would like to see that, just because, I mean, if it's if it basically cinches it by saying, you know, you can click support ten plus, then, you know, I think my view is different than obviously to the point where we're not gonna use all our money. So, I think that would be very helpful.
Sorry, I didn't quite hear you.
I said, I, I think even getting that additional information would be very helpful.
Sure, yeah, we, uh, Jim can provide the calculation, you know, formula, which I would suspect is much higher than ten. So I'm not sure how the state, you know, takes this information in, whether it's based on estimates of other buildings or projects or this sort of standard formula.
Right.
Um, I, I would be, I think it would be inaccurate to estimate any less than nine or ten. I mean, that's the bare minimum, I think, that you would get here, like the more.
Okay.
Ultimately, for my conversation with the town attorney, it will not depend so much on the estimates, it'll depend what the actual reality is.
Okay.
So if in a particular year, we've only got two kids in the project, we're not gonna be able to shelter most of the money we would get.
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, again, extrapolating out, you, you would be right at that threshold. And I think with bigger units, it would make sense that there'd be more kids in this building than in Sandpiper.
How would you market these units? I'm just curious as to who's gonna be the target market in terms of.
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, I would say it's primarily people in the area that are looking to upgrade or downsize. So, you know, a good segment of our folks, you know, have houses that are too big, they, they are empty nesters. Um, we would be marketing to people moving to the area who are working here. You know, a lot of people, there's just not options. Um, you know, we have a thirty-three person waitlist at the Sandpiper. Um, people don't have newly constructed buildings that aren't just kind of like a box for people that you see a lot of these kind of square, you know, repetition type of buildings going up that don't have any access to nature, no balconies, that kind of thing. Um, and so we'd be marketing with people that want a little bit more connection and like the sense of place and a community, you know, so being in this downtown kind of more urban walkable location is something that appeals to a lot of people who don't want to be in Portland necessarily. Um, you know, a smaller fraction of people moving in from out of state, um, and they're used to these more, you know, buildings with amenities that foster community, that have a gym or a roof deck or places to have their mosh on club. Whereas most of the buildings, if not all the buildings we have here in Brunswick and Topson, either have no common areas or very minimal ones, basically. They're not fostering much community or they have a little clubhouse somewhere, uh, because they're separate buildings. They're not all connected.
So would that include essentially sort of pre-selling these?
Well, they're not condos, they're apartments, but the leasing efforts would begin, I mean, at least sixty.
In danger, isn't it?
Yeah, some people have that kind of flexibility where they're planning that far ahead and can sign lease or.
Just relative to the, the interest of, uh, parents with kids, you know, in terms of is that going to be a big market or a small market?
I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I, I wish I, I, I would be dishonest if I said a big market or a small market, because I don't know. And it's actually illegal for us to market to children, or like there's the housing, there are housing laws that prevent me from saying, you know, only older, only, you know, people without or with kids, so I have to be a little careful. You know, we can show photos of kids on a swing set, you know, and, and things like that, but we can't over the state that we're looking for certain kinds of families or demographics, basically. You have to be aware that whatever applies within, again, the, the two restrictions that we've agreed to with Topson.
Mm-hmm.
Just spitballing.
Sure.
One other thing, maybe, Jim, we could weigh in on this, but another thing we're gonna need in the next ten years is a new ladder truck. Um, since this is gonna be a four-story building, which probably justifies putting aside some percentage of this, of the TIF revenue towards the capital reserve for the ladder truck.
So, and just to go back, because I've said this on the record previously, I'm not the attorney, so I just want to be careful. I would want you to double-check it with your town attorney. The, uh, if, if there's a, uh, connection between the expenditure and the development, then it could be included in that sense. It's been done that way in other communities, so that would not be out of the question. Uh, and so like, uh, I've seen it done where there's any kind of building above two stories, for instance, where there's been five, you know, the, the right kind of equipment is needed, that would be a legitimate expenditure, and you would put that in the development plan with the TIF when it's created. And, um, and then, um, same thing for, like, that be, the, uh, you would estimate the school impacts as well, and you would put that in the development plan as eligible expenditures. And then you can use it for both or, one or the other too, so.
So the procedure, if, what we're asking for, um, from this is basically instruction, is whether we should work on it. If you say yes, go ahead and work on it. We'd then work with Jim and Dave and then Bill Sausser, the town attorney, to put together the paperwork to uh, submit to DECD, would also have to go to a special town meeting.
Um.
Um, Phil said we might be able to, or we probably could, if we wanted to, put it on the November ballot. Uh, we'd have to have a public hearing in advance, but, so there's a couple of different ways it could go to town meeting. It could be to have, call a special one, or it could be to try to put it on the November ballot.
You are gonna get some data for us, and I'm gonna propose, this is not an official motion, I'm just discussing. We have four of five selectmen here. And you need a three, uh, you need votes from three to make this move forward, and with Matt being gone, I'm thinking, just wait for those numbers and then vote on this when Matt is back. And here, then we have our full our full team. So it's just something to consider. This is a big decision. I, I just think it would be nice for, what are your thoughts, anyone?
Um, I just have one, a question for you. I'm listening to Mark, uh, talk about the potential not pushing this through. If this, if we voted no on this, what are your plans for the building in the future? Are you just gonna have to wait till rates come down, or would you move the building to a different town? Uh, do you guys have any plans if this doesn't pass of how to get this building created? I mean, I'm sure you do, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, we, we'd probably go to a town that is more supportive of workforce housing.
Thoughts on, on comment?
I think we tabled this until next meeting when Matt's here, and hopefully everybody else is here at the same time, since we've had a great little work in that regard. Um.
You agree with that?
Yeah.
So I make a motion that we table the decision of that.
Can I ask a quick question, uh, for Mark? Um, would that still give the town time, uh, to get something prepared for a November vote, you think, if we're?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay, we have a motion.
I have a mo- I make a motion that we postpone the decision on the, uh, TIF recording in Park um, until our next meeting, so we can look at the data they're gonna provide, and so that Matt Nixon can also reprise the vote.
Good motion.
Okay.
Second. All favor? We'll see you again soon.
We had a quick question, if you don't mind.
No, no, you can.
Yeah, man, just to help out, Mark, just I want to clarify so what we can get for information. So we can get, we can get the multiplier, uh, that's typically used based on experience in the development. Uh, and it would be by unit numbers, so it would be one bedroom, two bedrooms, so on and so forth. We'll, we'll apply that number and come up with an estimate. Plus, you would have the estimate in, like, the Brunswick estimate as well. That's also some real good data, and we can get some other examples, we will. Uh, so that would be the housing one, the, uh, student one, and I have just two really other quick questions. On the, so it's the, you also want information on, uh, whether or not, and like, it would uh, be eligible use for a fire truck if it was for a ladder truck that was necessitated by the size of the bill and the height of the bill, and understanding it's obviously also necessitated by other, it wouldn't just be exclusive, right?
Right.
But that's okay.
Truck, we brought it there.
Yeah, and that's okay. That's been done in other communities as well. Uh, I think most recently Westbrook, but I'll double-check that fact. And then finally, I just got one other question, just some guidance on the method. I just want to make sure, since I don't want to postpone another meeting. Uh, is the method therefore likely that you want to see both consideration for a DECD, Department of Economic Development TIF and an affordable housing TIF with main housing? Do you still have a preference on one of those?
I think that, to, for us to really get the benefit of our TIF, we have to find expenses we would have paid anyway. Um, at first, I was most thinking before the housing one is nice, because we can use it for school things. But then, when we're thinking, oh, we may not actually have enough kids in the school to, to soak up town share, it thought maybe we need to, it might make more sense to do a different type, if we can do it. I don't think we can probably pay for the entire ladder truck, but, you know, pay a percentage of it or something.
That's what you would normally do as a.
Because something we get with our current TIFs is we got all these TIFs that we can't, there's, any of the approved expenses aren't things we need.
Yeah.
So we end up not sheltering the money, not getting the benefit of the TIF.
Got you.
And, uh, so.
All right, we'll look at the DECD to understand that it can be, making sure it can be used for students or a school impact on students and the public safety, capital expenditure, and like a little bit of clarity on what else it might be used for, and then, uh, we'll be back.
And, and just a quick clarification, um, from selectwoman Callahan, uh, is that the data you were looking for us to bring? Is there anything else?
I'm also interested in just getting, I mean, assuming the rents are controlled by policy and formula.
Yeah.
Can I see more of that too, like, or, like, the fifty units, the ten units, another million units, just to see how that's gonna, like, pan out for?
Absolutely, yes. You can bring, uh, it's like published by HUD, you know, for each county, you know, in the nation, basically, and John Hodge provided us those, so we'll bring that.
Okay, then, great.
Right.
If you really want to pour a rabbit out of your hat, you could find a way to fund a community center with it.
That's for the, that's for the eighty percent TIF.
That one's still tough.
Yeah, I agree.
You're not alone.
That's why I don't think you'd go pull the rabbit.
Yeah, yeah. Thank, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, so we are moving twenty-five dash forty-eight. The next item. Consideration and any appropriate action on discussing if the select board would be in favor of paying the county tax in two installments instead of one month sum, or one month payment.
So the background behind this, um, is that the Woolwich Town Administrator reached out and said their select board had asked her to contact the other ones in the county. Uh, because they're having to take out a tax anticipation note to pay their county taxes as of October first, before they get any taxes in. And they'd like to know the sense of other select boards, if they would like to try to find a way to pay two payments, two payments rather than one. Um, I reached out to Amber Jones, the county administrator, and discussed a little bit with Gail Eaton, the county treasurer. Both thought it would be problematic, certainly for this year, because the budget's already done. Um, I'm wondering if there maybe isn't common ground that could be reached with, maybe we pay a little earlier? Because whether we come up with the money in, say, August versus October, we're just half of it, and then get the other half, say, in February or something. Um, but Jill, the county finance director is here to address things, as is Gail Eaton, so to give, um, a complete perspective. Tall Gail Eaton's there.
Yes, Gail, um, fifty grand a year, and here, uh, as Mark said, I'm county treasurer. I'm also chair of the finance committee for the town of Topson. And my concern is that I think in the long run, it's going to hurt the taxpayer. Because you will be just moving the costs from one entity to another. And it may cost the town some to, to borrow in order to cover, cover that stuff, but it's gonna cost the county considerably in lost interest. And trying to, uh, uh, ease everybody, I think we're gonna end up in the long run increasing the overall tax burden for the taxpayer if we try to do that. Uh, Jill has the numbers, but, uh, having gone through the budget process here for the town and the county, uh, I'm very happy with the town's budget, not so with the county, but, uh, that's my own personal opinion, so. There you have it.
Thank you.
Well, um, yes, as Gail mentioned, uh, we did look at the different scenarios of doing just the one payment upfront or then the two payments. And it was going to be a great increase for the county expense-wise. We would be losing about two-thirds or so of our budgeted interest, and then it will also cost a lot of money to finance a TAM. So we also feel that would have to be offered or enacted by all municipalities, because I'm a resident of the county, and I would not want my taxes to go up because another town did not pay on time.
So. Let's see. To some extent, it's a wash, that's my opinion. Um, truly, because what you earn is what we don't earn, so to speak.
Right.
I mean, but I also understand you're dealing with probably a different budget than, you know, we'd have versus what Bowden has, et cetera. If, so if you run this, you're getting paid over a different interval than today.
Mm-hmm.
Are there periods where you know you would actually have to borrow?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And how much do you currently earn in interest income annually?
Um, it really fluctuates depending on, you know, the interest. Our best year, we had about seventy thousand dollars in our hearts, we had about twenty-one. We budgeted forty thousand for this year.
Basically, so many interest rates are gonna stay the same?
Or a ball just a bit.
And what's, do you have any idea what it would cost, what your borrowing cost are? Is it like three percent?
We looked at it at four percent, just to be conservative.
Okay, so, I mean, net, net, you'd have the the reduction in interest income plus interest expense.
Exactly, plus lawyer fees to do for TAM.
Mm-hmm.
And we'd be looking at a lot more money than the TAM that the town would need to take out.
Right. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just saying, what is, what would be the advantage to the town of Topson to agree to the question of, you know, is income, interest income?
The interest to the town of Topson, just from Topson's perspective, is we would have our money longer, so we'd get more interest. The interest to the town of Topsom, just from top's perspective, is we would have our money longer, so we'd get more interest.
Right. Right, so why, why, I, I just don't understand, you know, maybe you can address this as well. From this perspective of the town of Topsom. Um, how much interest would we lose by paying twice, twice a year instead of once a year?
I haven't, because I'm, I don't have the budget in front of me and again. Trying to figure out. What the impact might even have the numbers in front of me, I think it's a good thing.
Kathy's been getting around three to three and a half percent on things. So if, right now we've, well, in October, we'll have to pay roughly two point five million. So if we had broken it up into two payments, we would have about one point two five million that for six more months would get three to three and a half percent on.
One point two five million?
I guess my question for Jill is, when do you have your point you would have to borrow money? Cause I would think probably your leanest time is what, just before October first?
Yes, definitely.
So what if we paid you our, you know, our half payment, say in August, so that. Wouldn't that make your life maybe better? So that you wouldn't have to borrow money to get you through to October?
Oh, leave with eleven early payment. However, that wouldn't help overall, just one town. We do get other towns early who do pay it all upfront as well, so.
But I think for, you know, for the, I'm not talking about this year because everyone's like, set, but what if for future years, everyone pays? Half in August and the other half in February with, that might avoid having to borrow money with them.
That is what we looked at and we do get really skinny in that time before February, like December, January. We definitely need a tan for at least once.
And maybe we can play with that exact date. Maybe it's.
Yes.
July and January or something, but it's.
I think it would be the same no matter what month it was.
Is the interest in this budget we vote?
Um, no, because revenue's not in the budget. Or, I mean, not in that.
What's the total county budget?
Oh, boy. About seven, maybe. Oh, not that much. It was fourteen million and change.
Right.
Woolwich's bad for topsom.
So the forty thousand dollars that you guys would get in revenue from interest is very. An insignificant portion to the thirteen point five percent increase that we experienced this year.
It is, but it also balances the budget and if we do take on these expenses, we then have to push the expenses out to the community.
And I guess what I'm thinking is that those additional expenses that you would have to push onto us. Would be washed by the interest that we would gain by keeping it. Depending on how, what the interest rates are.
I think it's because of better interest rates.
Yeah, depends on, so it could benefit us more depending on the interest rate, keeping the money longer. And just having you guys increase the budget another percentage.
I'm sorry that I chuckled on that, but having sat through the town budget meetings and the county budget meetings. The. Concern for the bottom line and the endly taxpayer is substantial. And even though you say a little bit. It has an impact on the end user and. Trying to get something that's out there that's reasonable, that in my opinion. Funds the towns, the county, so that things are done adequately, so that they've got the stuff that they really need is a real, real push. And.
Can you help me understand the impact? I guess that's where I'm lost. Um, the difference is gonna have a direct big impact on a taxpayer. My lack of knowledge, I, or just maybe pretend I'm really stupid and try to explain it on the easy way. What are those impacts over the forty thousand dollar interests that was budgeted this year?
Again, there's so, there are a lot of factors that go into that. Like I said, the, every town's budget is the schools, the county and the town itself.
Yep.
And depending on what kind of deals any particular community will make in terms of their interest or their borrowing, they'll have a one cap on it. So it's not a very easy thing to say that, okay, it's gonna cost an extra ten dollars per thousand. If we do it this way without having some real numbers to work with, and I don't have those numbers. I'm not sure if I'm making that as clear as.
No, um, I, I guess the numbers are what are leading me to my, my thought process, just. The impact seems like it wouldn't be as bad for the town of Top, I have to speak for just the town of Topsom.
Right.
Uh, and it doesn't seem like the impact for the town of Topsom would be that impactful considering the difference for us to keep money versus doing it. Over two payments, considering the interest, you know, our, our interest because our budget's more significant. Um, we have more money sitting longer, I was.
I mean, for the town, it's not like Woolwich is talking about, they have to borrow money to pay the one payment. Our reserves are enough that we don't have to borrow money to pay it one payment, but we do lose out on interest that we would have if we had the money for six more months, say.
And this goes back to my point that, okay, in terms of the town members, that would benefit you. But that's going to increase the portion that you're gonna be charged by the county. Because they've gotta make up the difference in the interest that they're losing. They've gotta cover the interest on the loan for that. So that even though your, your town dollars may decrease per thousand, once you add back in that county number. I'm not sure you're gonna be saving, be seeing a saving on the bottom line for the taxpayers.
I guess we just would have to see those numbers to make that statement, honestly, because it could go the other way, just the same. Without seeing the numbers, it would be hard to, to declare what the impact overall would be. Um, and again, I, I'm not trying to sound, I'm just running numbers and just thinking about the town of Topsom. What would be best for us? And that's really the only thing that I, I would consider in this is what's. Uh, the Topsom taxpayers have enough of taxes going up and we hear it all the time and. The county did go up in taxes significantly this year. I think it was thirteen point five percent. What was the number?
Uh, ours was nine point eight eight percent.
Nine point eight, I'm sorry for misrepresenting that. It was for nine point five percent?
The original proposal was thirteen percent.
That's where I got that.
That's, and what. I think the county hasn't done the taxpayer service because they cut considerably to get the, the increase down below ten percent. To the point that they have cut out items that should have been probably uh budgeted for. And that the, the county is gonna be hurt because they are not gonna have the uh money to get the equipment and stuff that is really needed and is critical. So even though they got it under ten percent, I think in the long run. All of these, you know, it's, I'm not the only one.
My question was to the county then, if it's critical things that are needed, why wasn't it budgeted for?
You'll have to speak to the commissioners.
You know, I mean, we, we deal with basically whatever they say. We say, okay, whether we like it or not, we have to pay it.
Well, I mean, there were a, a lot of discussion. In terms of why they would be cutting it back that much and how much of a detriment it would be to the county and everybody. Um, it was just that. You can basically talk to you through in the base and they decided this is the number, didn't matter what the need was, this is where we want our numbers to be and.
This is what mystifies me, sorry. When we get to budgets and, and government budgets, only when it's a, a lower increase is it called a cut. It's not really.
Yeah, nine percent increase is still an increase. I don't care what you cut out of the original.
The budget committee supported the thirteen percent original because they had gone through, the departments had, had reviewed their budgets. Three times and they were asked to review it a fourth time to see if there were any items that they felt that they could really do without. And they didn't put the commissioners still cut to below ten percent.
Do all the towns pay the same way right now?
Yes, they do.
Okay, thanks. I thought for one second you said most of the towns, but it's all of them.
Uh, no, all pay in one lump sum, but some pay earlier than others.
I see, okay, thank you.
And some pay late and some might not.
Uh, no, no one ever pays late.
Uh, has there all the other towns in the county decided that they would do it twice a year?
Yeah.
Were you the first one that were asking or what is?
Uh, Woolwich did ask and they've asked twice and the commissioners have voted against it both times.
Okay. And anyone else?
Yeah.
No results yet for any other town.
I think the reason why I keep thinking there's some type of a middle ground to be reached is like our budget, most of yours is personnel cost. And the personnel costs are gonna extend long past October and extend to June. So it seems like there must be some point that the money could be some portion. Delayed into that would let us have our money a little longer, but you not have to take out a tax, tax anticipation note.
Well, um, as Gail mentioned with our budget in the state that it was in this year, we dipped way too far into the general fund. So we're not going to have those reserves that we may have had in previous years.
What causes those budget, budget shortfalls that have to go into the dips of the?
Uh, that was a choice by the commissioners for what they wanted to fund via taxes versus take from general fund.
Well, you must have some bills that come up like once a year and you have to pay them, like the premiums or things like that. So that would be a, a driver because if they all fell in October, for example.
Yes, we do have some very heavy bills that come at the beginning of the year.
Right. I never wanted to answer that. I, I'd just like to see the math that was used when you, when you came up with what the impact it'd be. I don't know, but something you can, you could put together and just, you know, send it, send it over to Mark.
Have to do a regular first, so.
Okay, that's fine. I, I mean.
May I ask for another favor? If we're trying to look at the whole picture.
Mm-hmm.
Besides us telling you what the impact is in terms of interest earned and borrowed, I'd like to see what the town thinks that they could do. So that we could couple it with what the county does to see what the actual bottom line impact is. Cause I think you're just getting the county information, you're only got half the picture.
All right, so what you're asking, like my suggestion, the August and February, you're asking to ask what that would look like for the town as far as what we maybe. Make an interest that wouldn't head otherwise or something?
That's, yeah, what the bottom line would be from the town if you were to space about and whether or not you have to borrow or the, all of that.
And, and we don't expect to have to borrow, just to be clear. It's just, we make less, like you, we make less interest if we give our money up sooner than. And I shouldn't say, if we get up sooner, we do give it up sooner. We make more interest if we keep our money longer, that's.
So we have one point two one?
We have to pay the county roughly two point five million October first and, and we're not talking, and we're not talking about this year because we understand your budget this year was based on. Expecting a one-time payment.
And the percentage that, of interest that we get for that.
Kathy's been getting between three and three point five. So basically it's one point two five million at, let's say, worst case scenario, three percent. For six months.
Right.
But I could talk to Kathy, give her a better number. At least some of the money isn't necessarily going into.
Right.
Cause we have school payments and other things we have to do through, so it isn't necessary all getting invested all.
Right.
They don't, they'll still fund it in the month.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we can look at the whole picture with the town and the county, but I think that would be helpful for the other.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Don't know what kind of thirty-seven tabs and five hundred dollars in which is just throwing away.
Right.
Well, the problem is, I mean, somebody still has to pay it no matter what. So if.
It's gonna turn around, come back to us.
Exactly. That's where I said it's kind of a wash. I mean, but we need the numbers to really show them and prove that. I mean, it all depends on what the county increase would go up because of, you know, having to basically.
And, and by the same, say you're losing thirty-seven because you don't have that money.
Right.
They're losing thirty-seven too because they having to borrow, so it's kind of.
More likely.
Yeah.
It's because of the interest that we're not getting plus seven years for the.
Yeah, so.
You know, and that would include whatever you'd have to pay if you were actually gonna do, uh, do a tan, you'd have to base, what, what's your expense to basically float one of those?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right?
Yeah.
Very good.
Tabled this till we get your report next week, tabled to the next meeting, can we do that? Okay, I make a motion that we.
I participate, okay, right.
I make a motion that we table this decision until our next meeting, so they have an opportunity to give us the numbers.
Motion?
Thank you.
Move in second, all favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, item twenty-five forty.
Three.
Forty-three, yeah, I lost my place. So, consideration any appropriate action to accept funds from the Saginaw County Commissioners and the Saginaw Board of Health. It's kinda tied together, aren't they?
I'm bringing with ten pounds though.
Yeah.
I'm assuming the Saginaw money is still available.
We'll see. Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess we are asking for the approval to accept the funds for the seven thousand and uh dollars to assist in the funding of our comfort dog program.
Hmm.
And twenty-five hundred assist and they're running uh the, the law enforcement against drugs program. This is donated money, this is not a grant.
Any questions about that? It's very straightforward. Do you have the numbers for the number for the movie? Okay.
Uh, I make a motion to accept the funds from the Saginaw County Commissioners. For seven thousand dollars for the comfort dog program and from the Saginaw Board of Health, the amount twenty-five hundred dollars. From the law enforcement against drug program for that folks.
There we have motion.
Sorry, Tom.
Move in second, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
All right, consideration any appropriate action, uh, twenty-five forty-four, consideration and any appropriate action on a request to review chapter one fifty. Marijuana business licensing.
You, you may recall that last year we had a request from one of the um medical marijuana businesses in town. To look at our marijuana business licensing to technically consider having recreational facilities. At the time it was, said it would be tabled for a year.
Yep.
So bringing this back because it was tabled to see if you want us to work on this or not.
Is there someone here representing their group?
No, I didn't invite them to come either.
Okay.
I'm sure they would still be happy if we looked at it, but.
Okay.
Four resources would that state and prove that.
I would recommend if we did it, we did not do another ad hoc committee, because that'd be another more evil beginning and stuff. Um, I would recommend it be staff uh that would look at it and would give the opportunity for the public to come if they want, but we're doing, we're here at work day and things. Um, there's a couple of things that we probably should, at the very minimum. Change the names in it from marijuana to cannabis, because that's now the official name. Um, another reason to look at this is you may have been aware that there was a group. Um, conducting a petition drive last August to try to force a special town meeting. Um, and if that happened, it would be based on the wording of their petition, which may or may not be the wording that we would prefer. Um, we could potentially try to develop, say, a competing motion brought at the town meeting. But it would seem if we were thinking this was gonna need to be addressed, it'd be nicer to have, take a little more time, get more thought, get more people there put and stuff. So if we anticipate this maybe coming forward again in the next year or so, um, it might make sense to look at this on our own.
So right now we have two licenses for medical marijuana, uh, cannabis, I'll use that term. And we have none for recreational. I personally do not wanna see a recreational cannabis store in every corner for miles. You know, I'm not sure I even support recreational cannabis in our town. So, um, but definitely we don't want them to, to do the verbiage for any kind of town meeting, so. I'm open to uh having staff look at what potential. Wording can be used for this, if there's gonna be a limit to how many licenses will be. I certainly am open to that. I'm not open to having a committee of like-minded people deciding what the policy is going to be. Cause I think that people who are involved with the cannabis business are gonna wanna be on this committee, so I don't support that. But I do support the town, um, taking a look at that. Did you have any people in mind that wanted to oversee this?
Um, myself and the assistant town manager, planning department, code enforcement.
That's good.
And I think we would get input from the current, some of the current businesses, just because it's useful, but I think. Uh, I think it works for Topsom, the fact that we have the, the limits of two for things. Um, but you go to some neighboring towns and you see. Lot of it advertised. Um, and I think if a family wants to try to raise their children, not to partake in. Um, say cannabis or alcohol or for that matter, um, it helps not to have frequent signs on the side of the road. And I know an argument can be made that there's an awful lot of signs for alcohol on the side of the road, but doesn't necessarily mean you wanna end more, so.
So.
And it's been, how many years since we first passed the uh?
Think about that.
So lots changed. A lot has changed, you know, ten years, so I think it's, that's part of this as well, is just making sure we're up to date on how this industry is working and. You know, what, what have we learned and what have other towns learned? In terms of how this works, you know, are there any best practices that we could take advantage of?
So chapter one fifty for cannabis business licensing, all the. So chapter one fifty for cannabis business licensing altogether or specifically for recreational versus uh medical?
Right now is our only, other than a few mentions in the zoning code of where you can have businesses, this, it's all out of chapter one.
Here's a couple considerations that I think of in this industry. Traffic flows have increased in the town of Topson, we can thank Market Basket for that and other businesses that are growing. We have seven grocery stores in ten minutes, within ten minutes of my house, we have about ten gas stations each selling cigarettes. We're getting more liquor licenses, at least one more liquor license in our town, in a town that's growing. We have two medical shops because we wanted to limit it. We've constantly said the fear is that we don't want one on every corner, like some places that we go to. The reality of the situation is that industry has grown immensely over the past eight years since we've adopted our ordinance here. It would be worth looking at, a few of the cautionary pieces that I I think about when doing this is. When allowing the licensure, we we've limited for two medical. The part of the town that. We are is to support small business and legal business and cannabis is legal. It's not something that everybody likes, but not everybody likes drinking and not everybody likes smoking. But they have to go into a gas station and be forced to sit and see the cigarettes behind the counter when they go pay. So I don't think it's a matter of what we like here, I think it would be wise to try to put this to a November vote in November. To the town to say, would you support adult use cannabis in our town? And or something of the like, much like what we did with medical cannabis, just to see if they support it. If they don't support the adult use in our town, maybe it's time to revisit the number of stores that we do allow, considering the amount of traffic flow. It's all condensed and that's kind of the whole plan with the new code is put everything right in the center. Where all the traffic is, it's not like people are biking and walking and gallivanting around there, driving to and from certain locations. I wouldn't see any harm going in that area of the Topson Fair Mall. Maybe over in Crooker Pit when that gets developed, if that gets developed, or on the west side of two ninety-five if that ever gets developed, so. I do think it's time to revisit a lot of this, a lot of language has changed, a lot of regulation has changed and it's continually doing that. It is time to relook at, I don't know what the answers are for where we go, but um. I would like to see what the town says as far as adult use stores. Because. Our opinions are supposed to be representative of that, and I think that's hard to push aside our own personal beliefs on that to see what. And then say we speak for the town, I think the town should speak on this, this is a big topic, um, and potentially controversial, because there's. There's heavy believers on either side and I, and honestly, I don't know where the town sits anymore, maybe they've swayed, but when we did it originally. People were in favor of medical but not adult use. People have had a chance to drive around for eight years to see what the market looks like and what they want and what they don't want, and. I think they deserve to be able to say what they want. In this town, and if it passes, then we choose to to limit it, you know, or find a way to. Uh, limit how many stores we can have, much like we do with liquor licenses, you know, we we limit how many of those have. The the last thing that I would say about the licensing, if we do allow adult use in the future. One thing I would caution is not to allow any single business own more than one storefront license. Um, if you can recall, there were a medical cannabis store that started in Topson before regulation. Even though Topson was not in favor of having it. And continued to just operate in that fashion and it didn't bode well for the town. It would be tough if a same situation happened where the same store or other store. Just kind of slid into an adult use license along with their medical license, because now we have. A monopoly of of a business and that's not really fair to other entrepreneurs that are trying to start a business or grow their business. So I would like to keep it, my my preference would be to keep it separate, if you you can have one license for a store. Either medical or adult use, but not both.
Mind if I ask a good question?
You just did.
So I think if I understand what you're saying, because if we were to change this, it would be till next May anyway. Just first, almost an opinion poll.
Yes.
At the November election, and then depending on the results of that, then at that point start working on potentially something for town meeting.
Uh, it's coming, so I mean, maybe to loosely prepare for something and and bounce ideas. But in November, if the town overwhelmingly says, yeah, I'd love to have adult use stores here. The conversations can be started between now and then, and once November hits, we can really go to work and see what works best for the town.
I'm okay with you starting the ball rolling and gathering thoughts and policies or whatever, or you think you should, we should just wait for polls to come?
Well, I mean, we can change ordinances at any time because we can increase the number of stores that we allow also, we've had two. Medical stores in our town for eight years. We can tolerate more, it's whether or not, you know, people wanna see that or not, but then again, we have. The right to say that small businesses deserve to be here, what is that magic number and? We can say we we're gonna up it to four stores, allowing two more medical. Or we could say we'll up it to four, allowing two adult use in addition to what we offer currently, so yeah, I mean. It would be worth it to look to see what we have. What, you know, what can be done? In the meantime.
Great.
I don't know, I'm. Long experience about it.
So, the way this is written, basically just for review.
It's just a review.
Where we go from there.
Yeah.
Although I I almost kind of like if I. I almost kind of liked what I heard. It's like what my home say, is let's get the public input first before we start spending a lot of time on it, so let's do that opinion poll in November. And then, because we've got plenty of time after November before May that we could write and make changes to coordinate.
That's a good point.
I don't think there would take a lot of time to change the existing ordinance.
Especially if all we're doing is changing marijuana to cannabis.
Yeah, language changes or regulation changes. Uh, application process changes. Because the prob- the problem with our ordinance right now is that it stayed stationary for eight years while the state of Maine changed. Almost up monthly on something. And what we're experiencing now is. All of the problems of having to apply for here. Where we're trying to, people are making applications or submitting applications as far as what the standard for the state is, and we have different standards in the state. And that state constantly changes their standard, so we may ask more than what we really need from. Other businesses, because if they get approved from the state, they have to go through a proper vetting anyway. And if we're asking more than that, is that necessary, is that, is that something that we can consider changing as well, is how do we accept these applications? Sure, make it a little bit easier for the staff here, they would. I don't think they would mind.
So. If I'm understanding correctly, what we're looking for is a motion to. Conduct a Topson resident opinion bullet in the November twenty twenty-five election. To either approve or reject. Cannabis usage.
Adult use cannabis stores in the town, in the town of Topson. So it it, the question would say, are you in favor? Something like this, are you in favor of allowing adult use or recreational cannabis sales in the town of Topson? Yes or no? And depending on that poll, if we get an eighty percent no, I think that makes a very clear decision for us in support of our. Town, um, and if it goes the other way, then it's also very clear.
So should we also as part of this poll ask if they are in favor of medical cannabis use? Or is that?
I think the, we already have those, that vote was already taken.
Okay.
Unless you need to increase the number of them.
Could have another question that says, are you? If they are in favor of adult use, we can't eliminate licenses, we can only add licenses, so. Maybe that's another question, I don't know if that's even appropriate to say, are you in favor of adding additional cannabis licenses in the town of Topson from two to four? Yes or no? The hard part would be is if they were in favor of adult use and not in favor of increasing license, the number of licenses. Because then. You already have two medical licenses, no adult use would ever get in. Unless somebody dropped.
Unless they close the business.
Yeah, unless somebody dropped the medical license and opened one up.
So one of the medical would transfer to uh adult use. Since they already had the license, or would that be a different application?
It'd be a different application.
And you can look at it in terms of the total number or.
They would have to make their application full and complete. Before their medical store license expired, so that it would be like expired, brand new license, all in one, just transfer.
So maybe just instead of a review of chapter one fifty that we could request. Uh, the Topson resident opinion poll. And to a a sign mark to come up with the wording of those questions with. So that they can, you know, try to think about it.
You could direct me to come up with wording for a question or questions as suggested by.
And then when they went up, you know, giving us time, you make much better decisions on what you wanna ask, and we might have three questions or four questions we wanna ask. People are gonna stop and take a poll, we might wanna do multiple questions in this category. So I don't wanna just tonight go, okay, well, yeah, it sounds good, we're just gonna ask these two questions, are you in favor of this, you are in favor of that? When, if we're given a chance to think about it, so I think we should just.
And we basically have until the end of August to come up with a wording, um, so you can direct me tonight and come back to you with some wording for question or questions.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be in this motion.
Yeah, just, that's, I think, come back with what your thoughts are on what point, I mean, maybe you have different thoughts on what questions you would like to ask.
Or maybe someone on your staff.
Yeah.
Jeff or planning or. Yeah, yeah, like you had originally talked about, that maybe, and the interns, yeah, they have a thing about, and so, um.
Glad you said it.
All of you, yeah, all of the above. So how do you wanna address the motion specifically, since we're kind of on the fence here?
I think the motion is, the way it's written is fine, I mean, it's pretty broad. And then, you know, select order will then instruct, you know. This will provide additional details.
So I would just add with the intent of um, um, having a Topson resident opinion vote on November twenty twenty-five, see if that's approved already tonight. Not the wording, just that we're gonna, it's gonna be a review. Of the chapter one fifty. With the intent of having a resident opinion vote on November twenty five.
We could just write, just the motion could be to take.
Keep that one here.
To request to review chapter one fifty, the marijuana business licensing and to look into. Potential poll questions for the November.
Yeah, that's cool.
Right, is that?
Yes, we move in second here. All favor?
I guess I make that motion.
I'm gonna have to look that one up, that's good.
Second is Marie, she gathered before me.
Okay.
She has a second.
Pardon, Ross, I I were asking Patty if she needed us to repeat the wording.
Oh, I'll watch it.
Oh, you don't?
Yeah, that one.
Alright, twenty-five forty-five, consideration any appropriate action on the appointment of Charles Farrell. And or John Haskell to the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah.
Lead the way.
Um, we had interviewed uh for both gentlemen today, both gentlemen were interested in the permanent position and not in the alternate. So we uh are going, I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint Charles Farrell to the zoning board of appeals. Um, at this time. And then if Mr. Haskell does choose to be um. An alternate in the future, we can address that at a later time.
Okay.
Have a second? Move and second it all in favor? Thank you. Alright, uh, twenty-five forty-six, consideration any appropriate action on annual appointments. And we have a sheet of the uh.
Yeah.
Participants, okay.
Uh, this is the statutory positions that we have, or you have to fill for the town and. And you've got your suggested people who are those same ones that have been doing it already.
Make a motion that we move the list.
Do we need to name them in this case?
I think so.
No, there are disclosed major item.
Alright, we got a motion, they're second.
Second.
Second round, all in favor? And next one, twenty-five forty-seven, consideration any appropriation, any appropriate action. On the reappointments to various boards and committees, and again, we have a list of the. Current members.
And Rose reached out to uh members whose terms were expiring in various committees to ask if they wish to continue. And those that got back to her and said they did wish to continue are on this list now. Um, there may be one or two that didn't get back to her yet, and so you may get someone else in the future, um, and there were some that said they didn't want to, well, the people on the list have said that they do want to do.
So we probably have more of yours coming up.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I think there were two members of the finance committee that are stepping down. Uh, but their positions don't end until the end of June, so we can't do any consults while.
Okay. Alright. Their motion.
I make a motion that we move the list.
It moved, seconded, all in favor?
Marie seconded, thank you.
And you're in favor, oh, correct, alright, thank you.
We may have a recruit recruitment visit Monday, I got invited to speak at the, I call it the original Highlands. To their residents association, and they said they'd like to get more involved in the town and wanna hear about opportunities they can volunteer and serve, so.
Good.
I'll let them know about our openings and we might get some more.
So I think that concludes the agenda for tonight. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion for adjourn.
Second.
All favor? We're adjourned.
Thank you.
That's a typical meeting.